Welcome everyone to the August 27 regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order, may we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here. This time I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Garcia for the pledge and enrollment.
Good evening, I believe we have a Boy Scout in our audience today from Troop 870 if you'd like to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you want to stay up there and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your troop and what you're doing here this evening.
I'm Caleb Manning, I'm from Troop 870, we're an LDS troop, I'm here working to earn my citizenship in the community, Mayor Fatch.
Well, we're very happy to have you and thank you for leading us in the pledge and if you'll just remain standing for a few more moments for our opening prayer. Lord, we pray that you guide us in our deliberations during this meeting so that we may conduct ourselves and perform our duties in direct accordance with the principal laws of our city, state, and country. We beseech your blessings so that we may always work in the best interest of our residents and our city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us, are there any changes? Seeing none.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Approval of the minutes, we'll start off with the July 29 2018 work session. Any comments?
Having no comments, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 9 work session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 9 work session minutes as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions? Move on. Next is the July 9 2018 regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the July 9-
Excuse me Mayor, there should be one exemption for July 9. That me? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to make a motion to approve the July 9 meeting, uh, regular meeting minutes, please.
I have a second, I have a motion and a second to approve the July 9 regular meeting minutes as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Opposed, same.
Extentions? There you go. Next, July 16 2018 work session with the Beaver Creek Schools.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve as submitted, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Next, July 27 2018 regular scheduled meeting.
Motion to approve.
Seconds.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for the July 27 2018 regular meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Opposed, same.
Extentions? Okay, very good. All right, next, pre-scheduled presenters. The Auditor of State Award with Distinction, Mr. Joseph Brand.
Hey, hey, hey.
How are you today?
It's great to be here again.
Good to see you.
Good to see you, I, for me it's-
Always, always a good face to see.
Well, yeah, thank, well, thank you. For me, this is four years, does anybody know how many years it's been? I don't know either, I didn't go back and look that up.
At least seven.
At least seven, there you go, there's somebody at number seven, so, that's why I said again, so, it's my honor to be here again tonight, as I always say, on behalf of Auditor State Davios. I'm not going to read through what I normally do, cause you guys kinda, kinda know the routine since I've been here, but I, but I do want to share with you some of the numbers. We audit 59, roughly 5,900 entities and less than 3 to 5% each year are even eligible for this award. Basically, the Auditor of State Award with Distinction is presented to local governments and school districts that meet the criteria of a clean audit report. This report represents the hard work of all the city employees here and everybody that works hard, including the council here, the mayor, the manager, and everybody that, that makes this happen year in and year out. It's a lot of people here within the city that have their hands in the finances and to be able to get this award year in and year out just says a lot for the community. I specifically want to recognize Bill Cussera, the Finance Director, for his, for his outstanding commitment to fiscal integrity here, congratulations Bill. And on behalf of Auditor State Davios, Mayor, if you'd like to come down here, I can present this to you.
If I can get Mr. Cussera to come up here with me, please. How you doing?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Fun times.
All right, you're getting them now, there Bill, I want you to-
All right. Well, on behalf of Auditor State Davios, I'd like to present again the Auditor of State Award with Distinction to the City of Beaver Creek. Congratulations Bill, congratulations Mayor.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Anybody have pictures?
It's coming through the camera.
It's coming through the camera, oh, I see.
You gotta hold it steady for just a second though, it's zooming out.
Okay.
As you mentioned earlier-
Hey, we can do pictures this way.
One this way.
This way.
Oh. Is that good or he wants to move around here? Is that good?
You were really working it there.
So was I working it?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Congratulations everyone, congratulations.
Thanks Joe, good to see you.
I talked to Jim Shaw earlier today.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
I told, I told him I was going to see you.
Thanks a lot.
Congratulations everyone.
Thank you sir.
And congratulations one more time to Mr. Cussera, thank, thank you very much.
And to his wonderful staff.
And the wonderful staff, I am sorry I left that on.
No, 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 Teresa, I knew you meant.
All right. Any comments, anybody want to talk about on this?
Just again, how he reiterated only 3 to 6% of the entities receive this extinct, uh, audit of distinction, excuse me, Award with Distinction and that's really wonderful on, on the city's behalf, so, it goes to show you that our tax dollars are being spent fiscally and, and in accordance with state law and, so, very proud of them all.
Thank you sir. All right, moving on, public hearing, PUD 6-80.
This is an application filed by Flying Ace Car Wash, 13375 National Road, Southwest, Suite D, Reynoldsburg, Ohio 45368. The application requests a major modification for 0.8470 acres of land to allow for the construction of a car wash located at 3200 CJ Drive, further described as Book 5, Page 7, Parcel 52 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant present tonight that would like to make a presentation? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
I am Jeff Gilger, I am at the address referenced in the application. Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'd like to first state out, I'm grateful that I'm not falling in the medical marijuana group tonight. We had a lengthy wait to present before Planning Commission. I just wanna, hopefully most of you are familiar with our operations over at the green at County Line and Indian Ripple and we've enjoyed our relationship with the community, with Beaver Creek and we are currently expanding our brand in the greater Dayton market and looking to add up to three to five new locations and this is our first of our next phase of growth in the community. We identified the site on CJ Drive as an opportunity quite a while back and through some negotiations with Restaurant Brands International and Owens Burger King out of Ontario and their legal team out of Miami, it's been kind of a challenge to get a little bow on this thing, but here we are, we're looking forward to hopefully breaking ground this year and hopefully washing cars before the calendar rolls over to 2019.
Wow.
So, I shared with Planning Commission recently, Flying Ace has merged with Mumu Car Wash out of Columbus, Ohio, we now have 16 locations, two under construction in Columbus, we have some new private equity funds partnering with us to help us expand our growth and we're excited to grow in Beaver Creek and be a part of, hopefully, some new redevelopment back on CJ, but nonetheless on Fairfield and at the 35 North Fairfield corridor there, so.
That's all I have. Well, we appreciate that very much and we, I think that some of us looking a little excited that there's going to be something starting, happening down in that area, yes sir, so thank you.
We're excited to be a catalyst, hopefully.
I think you will be.
Good evening Mayor, members of the City Council. The case you have before you is 6-80, MOD 7-18, it's the Flying Ace Car Wash, they're looking for a major modification to the existing site plan to construct a car wash on about .85 acres. Projects located in central Beaver Creek, just south of the intersection of North Fairfield Road and 35 and CJ Drive, it's the site of the old Burger King that's at that location, as everyone is aware, the Burger King's been empty for a few years now and is falling in a state of disrepair, so we're excited to work with this applicant, getting, getting this application in and start the redevelopment of this site. The property again is zone PUD 6-80 with a B3 underlying district, that's how we use to rezone properties and what that means is, there is a, it's basically the uses and setbacks are what's allowed in the B3 and then there's a PUD overlay, so, it requires to go on through the specific site plan and modification process. Car washes are allowed in a B3 district, are allowed with this, within this PUD. To the east is some residential, it's also a B3 zoning district, to the south is a B2, but it's actually being used as a non-conforming residence. To the west is remainder of the Beaver Valley Shopping Center, there's a bank and, or a few banks to the, to the northwest and then there's a vacant lot to the immediate north. Seen here is the proposed access, or seen here is the proposed site plan, they're proposing one access point to the site which is located here, it's about 220 feet from the intersection of North Fairfield and CJ. They're proposing four parking spaces, four regular parking spaces, three up here in the northeast, or the northern portion of the site and then one handicap parking spot along the northernmost point of the building. And then there's 16 other parking spaces, these are a little bit wider than a traditional parking spaces, they're 12 feet wide because that's where the self-serve vacuum spots are going to be, so they're going to have 16 of those. They do have a two, a double lane stacking area all the way around the east of the site and into the north and then it becomes a one, one car, each car takes its turn to go through and ultimately into the building. In terms of stacking, for this particular use, they're required to have 10, they're allowed, they're required to provide up to 10 spaces of stacking. Just for reference, the, the Flying Ace up at the green has, or near the green has 16 parking space, or 16, stacking for 16 cars and this application actually has stacking for 24 cars, so there's a lot more stacking, cause I know that there was concern about cars, you know, backing up, out onto CJ, just as there's concern about it backing out on Indian Ripple Road, or I'm sorry, on County Line Road. So they do have ample spaces for stacking. This is the proposed building, it's actually the same building that they have up at, near the green, it's 35 feet wide, 123 feet long and it's actually an arched roof and it's 20, 21 feet to the top of that. They use a combination of brown brick around the majority of the building and then there's a red brick base and then they've got four red brick pillars on each of the four corners of the building. Over the windows on the side elevation, they have a metal awning and it's the same metal that they use for the arched metal standing seam roof. They do show wall signs on all four sides of the building, that's, we had that same four-sided wall signs on the one at Indian Ripple and never saw a problem, it didn't seem that was too, too much signage, so we didn't, we didn't think it'd be a problem here. That also includes a 270 square foot mural on the side elevation with the faux hangar doors and it gives a sense that this is a airplane hangar. In terms of the ground signage, they did propose a five-foot ground sign out near CJ and North Fairfield and one of the conditions we added, they actually take that brick that they proposed on the, on the base and wrap it up the sides, so that's what, we kinda did a Photoshop of how we anticipated it would look, it'd still be five feet tall, use the same brick as the, the brick on the building. Planning Commission did recommend approval, staff recommends approval of the applicant's request, there are 14 conditions in your motion for your consideration and I'll be ans, happy to answer any questions after the public hearing, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, this is a public hearing, is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Please come forward, give us a name and address please, we ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes, if you think it's going to be longer than that, you can have somebody in the audience-
No, short and quick, if maybe it's more informative, my name's Don Rogers, I'm at 1112 Grove Hill Drive. My eyesight's kinda terrible, so I was just curious what that B2 property was, how, well, it's not on map-
You want across the street?
Yeah, well, on the bigger map you initially showed, you had a B3 and a B2.
There's a church here.
All right, like I say, my eyesight's, yeah, all right, and only other question I would have and this may not be the appropriate place for it, but where are they going to get their water? Is it just domestically supplied from the city? In other words, I'm on a well.
The county water system, yes.
All right, cause I'm on a well, so that would concern me.
It's county water.
What was it?
County water.
County water, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that had, has a question or input on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and we will move on to council time. Mr. Councilmember Curran, would you like to start?
Council time? No, I don't have anything at this time, Your Honor.
Councilmember Upton?
Thank you Mayor Stone, uh, yeah, just a, I guess a point of clarification for staff, um, it just caught my eye, I was looking at condition number 14, discussing signs, it says no raceways shall be permitted, I don't know what a raceway is.
Sometimes when you get a wall sign, they, they don't show it on this, but if there was like, say block lettering, in order to not have as many holes on the side of the wall, they, they put a, one raceway which is like a, a block that matches the color of the building and then they'll have the letters attached to that, but you, you would see that block behind there and it just doesn't look the same as if each letter was individually attached to the building, it looks a lot better if you got the brick in between the letters rather than a vinyl or metal block, so we just find it looks better, but with this particular one, they didn't have any, but should they want something down, down the road, we want to make sure that we're covered there.
Yeah, I just had no idea what a raceway sign was, but, other than that, I appreciate the applicant putting, putting this forward for us, a great investment in the community and that particular area is sorely needed, I'm so glad to see it happening and I've heard nothing but good things since it came into the green or over there off Indian Ripple. Question I have here is are you going to be partnering with Starbucks again, bringing Starbucks over?
Unfortunately, this site is not sized adequately to-
Can't get a raceway sign, huh? All right, thanks.
Councilmember Van?
I appreciate the, I appreciate the artwork, actually I like the picture of the airplane and, and how it relates to our region because we are the home of, birthplace of aviation. I just hope that the aesthetics of the building 15 years from now are terrific. This is a gateway into what we hope is going to be a great business park and, so I was just thinking about the aesthetics of you being the gateway into what we hope is a business park and hope that we are managing that well. I know that the current one looks good, I just, sometimes, sometimes car washes don't age as well, so I'm just, put some money away for a rainy day and keep it looking great. And that's my only comment.
Would you like me to speak to that?
Sure, if you have any, if you have any, if you have any plans.
If you want to talk, please come up to the front.
I, I would just say that some of our Columbus locations are now over 10 years old, we just made a $250,000 investment to renovate, improve, and add more free vacuums, which somebody thought, why are you spending $200 to give something away? We really believe in kind of a, you can't sell clean if you're not clean and so really the mentality of our business is to have, you know, professional landscaping, well-maintained, very appealing and friendly to the users, our customers, so, I, I don't foresee unless, you know, some unpredictable catastrophic economic event were to happen, that it would be an issue, we, we maintain and take care of our property and plan to do so.
I just wanted to remind you how valuable, you, you have a cornerstone that's very important, so I hope you value that as well.
Right, and the, and the, really the exterior materials and products we've chosen are relatively maintenance-free, there's not a lot of painting, there's not a lot of, they're durable and they should be, last quite, quite well into the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you sir, the only thing I'd like to add is, first of all, thank you for reinvesting into Beaver Creek, I'm a frequent user, the one off County Line, Indian Ripple, so appreciate you coming back and reinvesting in Beaver Creek. The only question I have for staff is, as a point of reference, how, I know you may not know off the top of your head, but roughly, how wide is the entrance to the location off of Indian Ripple and County Line, just as a reference point?
I mean, we would have made, we would have made it standard 26 feet wide like we here, you know, 13 feet on each lane.
I know the one at that location is a little different, but just as a comment, you know, if you have two, you know, pickup trucks going in at the same time, one exiting the wash and one coming into the wash, a lot of times, I experienced as a truck driver, you know, there's backup there, so here I know it's a little different site, but I was just trying to get a reference of why the one is over there, but.
Yeah, I mean, our standard width would be 26 feet, so I'm sure that that's what we've got over there as well.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Councilmember Littrell?
Thank you, well, Councilmember Rushing asked my question, which I appreciate, but is there any leeway on either side of that, because we discussed that at the Speedway due to the other ones, thank you Mayor, and so that's always kind of like, I just like to make sure, because as you said, if you have, you know, a truck or, you know, a suburban or Yukon or something like that, it makes it tight and then if they're turning off of North Fairfield, it could back up, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's our standard, I mean, if, if you'd like, if you'd like to, us to explore, make sure, see if it's feasible to widen it up and not counterproductive, sometimes if you get it too wide then-
Well, we don't want to be counterproductive, but at the same time, I think we need to be prudent that there's enough room to get the vehicles, the wider vehicles and, you know, a lot of people drive SUVs and larger trucks and super duty Fords, so, I've been to the one up on Indian Ripple and it's wonderful, but I just think we need to look at that, especially as close as it is off of North Fairfield, if we can.
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look and make sure the radiuses are appropriate for extra-large vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia?
I think all my questions have been asked, I just want to, again, reiterate our gratitude that you're staying in the area and picking this location, especially, I think, I also hope that you're a catalyst in that area and I wish you the best. I have not had a chance to use your facility because the lines are packed and I can't get in, so that says great things, so I'm hoping to see the same volume and jam-packed business for you over there and also happy we're getting you out a little sooner than we did at the Planning Commission meeting, so.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on the entrance, two things, and I would like staff to work with the applicant to see if another couple feet can be looked at, two things, one reason is because you're making a sharp U-turn when you come off of CJ instead of a gradual turn and going in. The other is that when you have exits like that, whether it's Speedway, whether it's this, and you don't have any markings, people don't always get over where they should be, but the biggest part of it is the fact that you have that direct U-turn and that, that truck of yours is not going to be in a close lane making a U-turn without going out the center of CJ. So if we could, if you could just take a look and work with staff and see if that would work for you, I know if that's standard, it's standard, but, and we can talk about that later, about maybe readdressing that, but if, if the two, the applicant and the staff can look at it and see if you can get another two feet or so off of that.
Okay.
I think we would all appreciate it and, but the bottom line is welcome, it's, we're, it's, I know that staff talked to some of us a while, quite a long while ago and, and asked, where would you put one? And we gave our input and I'm glad that it's here, that I see that people listen to us, so, thank you very much. Any further comment from staff? Are we okay with allowing the applicant staff to work on that together?
Yes.
Without making it a condition? Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, there's no further comment, I would move for the purpose of taking administrative action approval of PUD major modification for Flying Ace Car Wash, PUD 6-80, MOD 7/18. On the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted with the application and accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a PUD major modification as per Section 158070 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, and there are 14, I further move that this motion with all conditions be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, extensions? Motion passes, I expect a demolition crew there tomorrow, right?
Make sure that's closed.
Thank you very much.
I'll do them that, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ordinance resolutions and PUDs, ordinance 18-16.
This is a single reading of an ordinance to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018 and ending December 31st, 2018, and to amend ordinances 17-34, 18-02, 18-04, 18-10, and 18-14.
Thank you, Mr. Cussera.
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, before we get started, I did want to give a commercial break here too about that award, again, even though it's become fairly routine in the city to obtain this, as indicated, it's a pretty rare thing to do and we've got it seven out of the eight years that we've got the distinguished award, so again, I just wanted to emphasize the fact that that all starts from the top, from you reviewing the budgets, all the way down to the folks that are coding the invoices and getting those in, and our crack staff in finance that kind of summarize it and keep it all together and watch for the exceptions, so, just wanted to let you know that it is kind of a big deal, again, this is, we always kid around about the GFWA award that we've had for 30-some years, that's one that we actually pay to have them review it to get the award, this is one that comes from the state, we don't pay them anything and they recognize the ability of us to have a clean audit and I think it goes without saying that we're pretty proud of it, so, that's my commercial break for the-
All right, you stayed within three minutes.
And the reason why we get those awards is because we do a lot of additional appropriations and that's what you have before you today. This one in particular, the Public Service Department had budgeted for a software system, it's designed to do a lot of things, so it's designed to manage requests, track time and resources, manage assets and equipment, facilities, traffic signals, stormwater infrastructure, and determine when, like preventive maintenance and replacement costs and replacement times are due, we've never, we've tried to do those systems in the past, they've always been fairly manual, this kind of gets us up to speed as to how to do that, again, will go a long way in how we long-term budget for these things and the replacement of that infrastructure. As they were developing that, the scope of services for that software, Planning and Development also had a software that the vendor basically told them that they're going to stop maintaining anymore, so they were kind of in a crunch to get a new software system and what we realized was is that when we put this out, they're similar to the ones that Public Service was looking for, so what we did was we combined it all and we interviewed many vendors and found one that meets all the criteria for not only public services but for- that meets all the criteria for not only public services, but for planning and development and engineering. So with that in mind, what we also realized, too, was that rather than have all the money budgeted in public services, that we decided to allocate the costs out to the funds and the departments that are also benefiting from this upgraded software. So in order to do that, we had all the money sitting in the street fund, and we had to allocate it out to the other funds that were going to benefit from the software. So what you have before you is basically that allocation, and we did it by square feet, we did it by a number of vehicles, we did it a number of different ways, and that allocation, because it wasn't budgeted in those funds, have to be appropriated in this legislation. So in order to offset those costs that we have in there, again, the, what we've always been saying is the county auditor is very conservative about his estimates of the property taxes. So in August, we got our final settlement, and it was about 5% more than we had already projected. So what we're going to do is certify that revenue to come into those funds, and that will offset the cost associated with the software. Now, it's not one-to-one. The software is a fairly minor component of it, but when we were going to certify that additional property tax revenue, I decided to just certify the whole thing. So that's what you have before you, and that kind of explains the need for the appropriation and why we're certifying the other revenue that we have received from the county auditor as far as the property taxes go. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Mike Thonrose here, in case you want to ask a lot more detailed questions about software and what all that will do for us, but this right here is the legislation to appropriate that money and to certify the revenue.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions, or Mr. Casera?
I'm very excited about this. I think it's something that's really going to help us manage what we do in the city better, so if there's no questions, I would be delighted to make the motion.
Second, Mayor. I have a motion and a second. Any further comment? So we're going to move into the 21st century, then?
That's it.
Quickly.
All right, I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call, so maybe we have that roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Little?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?
Yes.
Councilmember Upton?
Yes.
Councilmember Van?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Mayor Stone?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next, ordinance 18-17, impact fee. Who's going to?
This is the first reading of an ordinance amending ordinances number 93-62, 95-66, 96-16, and 72, 97-72. The Beaver Creek Traffic Improvement District ordinance by amending the transportation system improvement fee schedule for District Number One, amending the fee per trip schedule for District Number One, and amending certain other provisions of the same ordinance.
Well, thank you. Mr. Moreland.
Yes, I'm giving, Mayor, members of City Council, here to speak a little bit about the proposed update to the city's traffic impact fee. To start off with, it might be useful to do a little bit of history on the impact fee. This is nothing new. It's been around since, 1993 is when it was first approved. Since that time, there's been three updates to the impact fee ordinance, the last one being in 1997. What we're asking for tonight would essentially be the fourth update to the 1993 original ordinance. And of course, it's important to note that since 1993, this fee's been collected. Again, nothing new for the past 25 years. We've been bringing in these monies to help finance improvements to improve capacity within the district. It might help a little bit to let you know where the district is. Again, this isn't changing with the update. It's going to stay the same as it's been since 93. But the line kind of marked in red is the limits of the impact fee district. You can see it kind of begins a little bit to the south of Kemp Road, and it goes to the northern corporation limits of the city. This area is the only place in the whole city where this fee applies. Anything built elsewhere in the city, there is no impact fee. It only applies within this area here. And again, it's important to note that these funds are only used to improve capacity. We're not permitted to use these funds for standard maintenance or anything like that. A couple of reasons why we think it's needed to do this update. As I said before, the last fee update was all the way back in 1997. And as with everything else, the cost of roadway construction has gone up since that time. So our costs are a lot more than they were when this last update was done. The original traffic study that generated a list of improvements was also last done in 1993. And obviously, since 93, there's been a lot of development in that portion of the city, a lot of changes as far as traffic patterns and the use of property and whatnot. So we felt it was important to update that study also to get a more accurate picture of where we're going from here on out. Speak a little bit about the traffic study that we did. We enlisted the help of our Planning and Zoning Department, where they helped us to figure what future development might look like within the vacant portions within the impact fee district. The portion to the right kind of summarizes the totals from what they were, the information that they supplied to us. Basically, medical office, we're looking at over half a million square feet, general office over a million square feet, commercial a little bit under half a million square feet, and of course, single-family residential and a little bit of multifamily development. In that traffic study, we took all these numbers, all this new use, and we plugged it into our existing roadway network. And when they did that, you can see many of our major routes, they're telling us we were looking at a level of service F at full buildout. So with the study, the parameter they had was minimum level of service D. So what they did was they gave us what improvements need to be done to achieve that level of service D at full buildout. And this is the, what, this is kind of a summary of all the traffic improvements that our consultant recommended as part of the study. You can see it touches on many of the major routes throughout the impact fee district. This chart here, we took all those improvements on the previous slide, and with current cost information, they added everything up. You can see it's a pinch over $18 million is what they figured the actual cost to be to construct that would be. Knowing that it's been a while since we've done a fee increase and trying to keep the fee increase as reasonable as we possibly could, we committed to go ahead and kick in 50%. And if 50% isn't just city money, it's grant money, basically, public funds, outside sources to help reduce the overall cost of what the fee payer would be paying with this. I should also say additionally, in the current ordinance, we have fee collections in there for the cost of right-of-way design, administrative costs. Additionally, we took all those costs out of this update to keep, again, to keep the fee as reasonable as we possibly could. So as far as this calculation, what's done is they take the fee payer cost, the improvements, divided by the number of trips, and that generates the cost per trip. And that cost per trip is used in the next slide to calculate what the fee for the various land uses would be. The top part are the existing impact fees. This is what people are currently paying today. This bottom part are the proposed fees. And off to the right, we have the percent of fee increase. And you can see the multifamily is bearing the largest increase, followed closely by a single-family residential. I should also note that in the, in the current impact fee structure, we only have one category for office. And you can see it's a little bit higher trips. What they did in the previous study was they combined the medical office use with the standard traditional office use to get a blended rate, where essentially, the standard office payers were, in a way, subsidizing the medical office payers, which have a much higher traffic generation rate. When we were looking at this update, we thought it was a more fair thing to do to split those out, where the fee payers would pay more and what the traffic generation would be. So we broke out that blended rate, and we came up with the medical office category, which is new, versus the standard office category. And again, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the, an ordinance, the first reading, so is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will move forward. Any comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Just a couple of comments. I was, I know we've had a lot of discussions about this in work sessions and other conversations, and I was really going down the path of this is just business as normal until we met last week, I think it was, and I found out that Beaver Creek is one of the only communities that has an impact fee, which is really concerning to me on what we are doing to potential economic growth in the area. You know, I know there are many benefits to moving to Beaver Creek, to developing in Beaver Creek, but this fee, though, we can't compare it to anything else because there's not another one out there, right? And I know other communities have tools that we don't because of their funding sources, and this is a way for us to make up some differences. But I just feel like this is maybe a little much, just because there's nothing to compare it to.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, we're also one of a few communities in Ohio that does not have an income tax.
Right. That's the funding source.
I guess that's seen as a revenue generator to help keep up the development that is coming to the community. See your point.
So we aren't the, we are one of a few in Ohio because we develop our city with the Ohio Code, and they govern what we can do. But in Illinois and other states, this is a common practice. So if you want to look at other places that do this, then we can have staff consider what it is. And the reason that impact fee was implemented initially was because there are a lot of infrastructure improvements required for a huge development, like a huge office building, a huge whatever. And the taxpayer, the homeowner, south of 35, would be paying for part of those improvements. And so the impact district was defined so that the developer would share the cost of those capital improvements to roads and bridges and parks and whatever, capital improvements within that district, so that we could save what it would cost people on the far end of the city that had no impact by it. And that's why it's called an impact fee. So maybe this is one of three readings, maybe staff could figure out where impact fees are used in the United States and give us a little refresher course on that. And it is, it is hard because we do want people to develop here. I specifically understand what you're saying, but I don't. We have to figure out the balance of how to make it fair for the rest of the residents so they aren't bearing the burden of the cost.
Sure.
And this was, this was the tool that was used to do that, so.
Yeah, I get that. I guess, and I'm not opposed to what we have in place today. I guess I'm questioning the raise, you know. What are we not doing today with today's rates that we could be doing if we did raise the rates?
We're not keeping up with the infrastructure repair and replacement.
But we can't do maintenance, right? The impact fees aren't allowed to go towards maintenance and upkeep. It's got to go to the improvements.
Well, we're expanding the width of.
If I can address that just a little bit. When the impact fees were developed, it was actually to protect the investor, because what was happening, and we were requiring everybody that built a building anywhere to improve their little piece of the street, and then all of a sudden, you start adding this up, and now you have, you have four or five businesses go in, and then all of a sudden, this sixth business triggers a stoplight down the road. So now that business is stuck with the entire bill of putting this traffic signal in. And then you go on, I mean, and it just mushrooms from there to where, so this was created as a way to not, not put all the cost on the last player, so that now everybody paid into this part, and at some point, then the city contracted then to have that improvement done. So it was a, whether it still is, I mean, if you look at the traffic study that says you're going to need X number of lanes along Presidential, whether it's right or wrong, somebody is going to have to, you know, if the current impact fees won't pay for it, and so somehow, we're going to have to find a way to pay for it, and if we start going back to requiring the developer to actually physically do it, it's going to be a little piece here.
Right.
And a little piece down here. And that's one of the reasons we don't have some of our sidewalks connected, we don't have some of the other things connected, because we require that developer to do just what's in front of his property, until such time as it triggers a major improvement somewhere else. So it's a, it's a tough nut to swallow. I understand that. But there, it was not, it's not to discipline or to put a hardship on the developer, it's actually to protect that developer in case he's the last person in, so to speak. But anyway, it, you know, probably, you know, try to get a little history maybe from how it was done.
It went all the way to the Ohio Supreme Court?
It did. And at schools in other states, schools use it a lot, especially on residential houses. They may be a $200 or $300 impact fee for, or maybe more, for a school system on every house.
Interesting.
But, yeah, as far as this type, we're one of the only ones in Ohio that I'm aware of. I don't know if that helped you at all or not, but there, there was a whole variety of reasons to try to put this impact fee in place.
You know, and I think that this all, this communication between us all brings up a really good, the situation is, you know, we have over $200 million in infrastructure areas that we need to develop on, and then we want economic development. I agree with Councilmember Upton. I think the fees are, I don't want to say too high because I don't have anything to compare it to, and I understand staff's position, you know, everything costs more than it did back in 1993. So, you know, maybe if we could get a little history. I don't think seeing what happens in Illinois or some other states is going to help us, even though I think, I think the idea was valid, I like that. It's just, you know, I think for economic development, I'm more concerned about Centerville and Kettering and Fairborn and places that have an income tax that are able to lure businesses in, and we can't. And so, you know, I think for me, that's, like you said, it's difficult to swallow, but honestly, we have to come up with something, and the same thing. So it's just one of those things, but I think to look at it and give it the best, you know, best set of eyes that we can to see if there's something else that we can do, or if is the cost where it needs to be.
Yeah. I'm actually a little concerned that we don't have impact fees in other parts of the city. Research Park is area, that land is a good example. Somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to redo, build a nice big building on, along Grange Hall on Research Park, we're going to require them most likely to widen that little, their face on Grange Hall. The cost is virtually the same, whether they widen a road or whether they pay into an impact fee. At least it was. I don't know about today's standards, but, but anyway.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Please.
I had sent council a copy of the impact fee study, which is done by a third-party analysis, all 176 pages, I think of it, with all the data. One of the things that drive it, which we first had the first study, we've done the study basically twice, because we came out with the study, and then Matt started meeting with developers, and developers said, this isn't all the land. You've missed half of the development, half of the square footage, and a lot of the medical, and a lot of this and that. So we leaned upon them, as well as Planning, Engineering Department did, and they gathered up all the future potential available, developable land. All that square footage, and then based upon what type of usage, is it retail, is it medical, is it office, you know, housing, all determines a standard by this company of the number of trips that that type of facility uses. Medical is definitely the highest number of trips. That's why we decided to separate out medical, because medical, hospital, doctor's offices, you know, treatment centers, whatever, really, really drive the cost, because, you know, there are patients incoming and outgoing all the time. But the number of trips is really what bases the, then the cost of that. And then when we took the number of trips based on the square footage and based on the type, that's what drove to when we said, we need a rating of D, and D is bad. D is next to failing still. But we need our roads improved to at least, it took it all to an F, but we need it to at least a D before, you know, so we can see what road improvements, just to make it a D we have. Therefore, it showed up $18 million of infrastructure to get to a D rating. Widening the roads, intersections, turn lanes, light, better lighting, all that, and it's all spelled out in the document I sent you. And with that... And with that, we tried, we agreed, we're like, whoa, that's, that's why we looked at office versus medical, we need to separate that. With separating that out, that only caused the office to go up 5%. Well, since 1997, going up 5% is good. So I was like, okay, that makes sense. The housing and stuff, if you look at the housing, there's going to be very little housing, and it's per unit, it's not per square footage, so it's not as much as you might think on, as far as, you know, in total sum. But, but just wanted to express that the, we did look at that, and so much, the old study that we're still currently under, the city only pays 20%. It's an 80-20 split. And this is proposing that we do 50-50. So to get the fee down, we said we would go 50-50 with it. So that did bring it down, or it'd be even much higher if we were still at the 80-20 split. We feel pretty much with, you guys know where our finances are and with the grants that we're able to get, 50-50 is going to be as about the break even that we, if we go lower, that we'll pay for 60% or 70%, we can do that. But then I don't know where we're going to come up with the funds when a project comes along. That, that's kind of where that goes. So it, the whole thing, too, with this going to the Supreme Court and everything that it went to, the study itself, we don't mess and manipulate the numbers. It's whole, it's intact, it's based on a third party. We can fluctuate with, do we do 50-50, do we do 60-40, that's fine. But all of the number, the, if we say, oh, well, we don't want those improvements done or that, we're starting to manipulate something, then that may open us up to trouble, maybe. So that's kind of where it's at. I wish we didn't have it. I fully agree with our Development Department that, I wish we didn't have it. If we ever get an alternative revenue source, I'd be the first one recommending, let's eliminate it and get it done and get, help to get businesses in here. But it's about the only fairest way without having an income tax, that it's a hard, it is a hard pill to swallow for that, I do agree. I just wanted to explain some additional background, so thank you.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, if I could just follow up on one of your comments, comment at 50-50 and 80-20.
Mm-hmm.
So under today's dollars, the developer is paying 80 or 20?
80%.
80.
And we're only paying 20.
Okay, so tomorrow's dollars, we're going to 50-50?
50-50. With the new number of trips and $18 million worth of...
So we're raising their...
Their portion, but we're raising our portion, too.
Okay, okay. So we're raising our portion.
We're raising the dollar amount, but lowering their portion.
Right.
Okay, from 80 to 50.
I feel like I'm missing a number in there.
Well, whatever the...
It's all got to add up to 100 somehow.
Yeah. Whatever the original amount of, of the...
Right. But they're paying 80 today, why would I want them to pay 80 tomorrow?
But that was 80 of a percentage of a development, whatever, 1993. Jeff, do you even know what the total development cost was back in 93?
I think it was like 12 million, something like that.
12 million? And now, so, so it was, they were 80% of 12 million, and now they're going to be 50% of 18, 19 million.
Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize, City Manager, I know you mentioned this before, so if you could remind me, this study will be done, we will review these numbers every...
Every two years.
Every two years.
And we can...
So if these projections would hypothetically fall short in the future, this formula would adjust then, or?
We have the, the original document that passed, that laid out how we work to every two years. We can do it by COLA, we can do it by certain procedures that allow us to adjust it by what we see is happening. So we will definitely stay on top of that every two years, because if I have to, based on COLA or cost of increases, you know, do 2% a year, or 2% every two years or something, that's a lot easier pill to swallow. And then, but we have to look at that in five years, we have to look at seeing what development actually happens.
Right.
If we see a lot of things happening, we may, there's no time limit on that, as we're adjusting, but if we see some major changes that have happened in, say, seven years, we may do, redo the whole study.
Okay.
If we don't have an alternative revenue source by that time. So anytime that we feel, man, really, a lot of things have really changed now, we need to redo the entire assessment. But we, every two years, we'll be back before council reviewing it and making our recommendation on proposed changes, if any.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is the first reading. Do I have a motion to move it on to the second and third?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 18-17, moving it on to the second and third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
Motion extensions, motion carries, thank you. Next, resolution 18-34.
This is a resolution directing the county, the Green County Auditor, to enter the cost of noxious weeds plus grass cuttings on the tax duplicate for the properties described in Exhibit A.
Mr. Casera?
I'm going to do another public address announcement for you as you get through this slideshow, but this is our annual track down the Noxious Weeds Road to assess these folks that were not in compliance with our ordinances. Again, just for folks that haven't been around, I wanted to just go through the process real quick. Again, we receive a notice that there's some high weeds, we go and inspect it, we place a placard in front of their yard, giving them five days to complete it. If they don't complete that, then we initiate a, the cutting of the grass or the maintenance of the property. And then we get the bill from the contractor and add a administrative fee and bill the property owner. If the property owner doesn't pay the invoice, then we add a $25 city assessment fee, and then according to our ordinance and 97-16, we're allowed to assess that through the county auditor on their next tax bill for the upcoming year. The county auditor does add 5% fee for his collection also, so you can see it gets, escalates pretty high, pretty quickly. And that does represent a lien on the property, and again, the deadline for doing this is September 11th, it's always the first Monday of the year. What I wanted to emphasize here, and this is more of the public address announcement here, is that this is the last phase of this entire process. Our ultimate goal is compliance. And what I wanted to show you up here was the stats related to the number of violations we've had, the number that were corrected, and more importantly, the corrected by the owner, the percentage. You can see that it's going up, and there's a couple of reasons for that that I'll get into in a minute, but the abandoned foreclosure and vacant property registry, you can see those are going up as long as corresponding with the revenue that we get from that process. So again, you're seeing that the number of violations is going up, the compliance is going up, which is our ultimate goal, and then this is always the last phase of this. So I wanted to refresh your memory, back in 2016, the Planning and now Development Department came up with a abandoned foreclosure and vacant property registry. So again, anytime there's a vacant property or a foreclosure, they actually have to register that with the city. Now, what that does is it gives that person some responsibility for doing that, and it gives us a contact for any of those properties that fall into disrepair. We know exactly who that person is that we need to contact to get it corrected. So again, by implementing this, we've streamlined this, we've reduced the complaints, and we've gotten more compliance. So again, this program started in 2016, it's $150 a year for that registry, they're required to do it, and then if the property's sold or they're in compliance for two years, they drop off the requirement for the registry at that point. But again, the ultimate goal of this was to reduce the complaints and reduce the assessments, and also increase the compliance. And again, if you go back to this slide right here, you can see the stats, and the number of the registries have gone up, again, compliance going up, and again, we've gone up with the number of notices that we've issued. Again, just to let you know, too, that you also did budget for a code enforcement intern in 2017, so again, that goes to the efforts that we're trying to do, is to maintain the properties within the city and show the emphasis on that particular outcome, so. So in the summary of this whole thing, this is that we only have 25 parcels that we're assessing this year, which is down almost half of what we normally do. We usually have about $8,000 or $9,000, we assess. This is down to 57, 57, and I apologize for giving you a new legislation today, but we actually had two payments come in that were on the list that paid today. And again, I wanted to adjust the legislation, reflect those, so that they didn't get assessed next year. So, so again, the money from the assessments, when we collect those, is part of the property tax settlement, that does go to the general fund, offset the cost for the contractor and our time and energy to get them to these locations and get them assessed. So with this legislation, I just asked the county auditor to put these assessments that you have on Exhibit A on the tax duplicate for next year. So, and staff is recommending approval of the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, council? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 18-34. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, sign. Extentions, motion carries, thank you. Resolution 18-35.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as the Grange Hall Road Widening Project, PID number 106222.
Mr. Marmon again?
Evening, again. I have a report that late last year, the city received notice that our grant application for improvements along the section of Grange Hall Road between Kemp and Summerfield, it was approved by the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. The amount of the grant is $2,247,000, they're giving us towards these improvements. Since we received notice of our grant approval, we've done some preliminary programming work with ODOT, and we're now in a position to go ahead and enter into an agreement with ODOT that governs the administration and funding for the project. Just kind of to summarize the project, we're proposing to widen the road to three lanes, curb gutter, side path along the west side, and sidewalk along the east side of that section of roadway. With that, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Question. What's the cost to your department to comply with all the regulations? There's over 10 pages here. Have you ever figured that?
You know, there...
I know it's a source of funds and it's I operate, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. There are some additional costs, because whenever you use the federal money, there's different rules you have to follow. So there's an environmental study that we'll have to do during the design phase, that'll, it'll cost us a little bit of extra money. Also, when we buy the right-of-way, there's a couple of extra steps that we have to go through because of the federal money involved in the project. I couldn't give you an exact number. I would say the environmental work is probably roughly, say, $50,000 out of like, I'm estimating $300,000 for design. So that's about where that shakes out. For the right-of-way acquisition, probably be about the same range, so say $100,000 in this particular project.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve...
Please do.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 18-35.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 18-35. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, resolution 18-36.
This is a resolution strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to invest the state budget surplus in municipalities.
Yes, sir.
Key adjective, strongly. In that particular legislation, you all received the Ohio Municipal League, they had a legislative bulletin that highlighted that the state is going to have a projected surplus of $147 million this year. So what their original plan was to do with that money was to spend about half of it on reducing the state income tax withholding and placing the other half in their, what they consider their rainy day fund. We call that fund balance, but they call it rainy day fund. So the OML suggested that we look back and say, and urge the governor to reinvest that money into municipal local services, infrastructure, public safety. And so we drafted a resolution from their model, addressing that and recommending that to the governor. What I found interesting when I was doing this whole thing was the amount of money that we have lost from the state since 2012. And let me just tell you, the programs that they, they accelerated the reduction of the intangible personal property tax and the utility deregulation tax. So again, we had a certain amount, they were going to do it over 13 years, they consolidated that and reduced it in about three or four years. The other thing is that the local government fund, everybody's aware of that, they basically cut that in half since 2012. So again, we're getting about half of that, we used to get about $834,000, now we're getting just a little over $400,000 with that. And then they eliminated the estate tax for the local governments. And again, we used all that funding to maintain operations and fund our limited infrastructure that was outside of the regular fund. So again, storm waters, those type of things that weren't incorporated into the street funds, that type of thing, we were actually using some of that money to do that in those projects. So, so again, what we've lost since 2012 is $7.2 million. And that equates to about $1.2 million a year we've lost and are continuing to lose. So again, when this popped up on the radar, we were, you know, adamant about doing whatever we could to convince the governor and the reps to take that money and send it back to the municipalities where it's been lacking and missing for a long time, so. Be happy to answer any questions. And your backup, too, you actually have a letter to be sent with the, to the governor with the actual legislation itself, so.
Any questions?
Mr. Casera, any idea how much the state has in their rainy day fund in total now?
No, but I, what I understand, this is the $68,000 that they were going to use was going to take it to their max, so they must have a range.
Right.
And I'm not sure what that number is, but...
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Right.
It's, yeah, it's billions with a B.
It's billions.
So that'd be like us saying, okay, our recommended range for the general fund is 20%, but our max is 100%. They're trying to take it all the way there, we're struggling to get to the 20%. So if you want to put it into that perspective, that's a good point.
Yeah. It just tears me up knowing how they got that money, you know, from where it was to where it is now. What we've lost, and every fee that they've added on, the 911 fee, I think, was added on since then. You know, the proposed income tax collection, which wouldn't affect us, but, you know, that's, that's all more fees the state's getting and not, not turning that money back around to where it was generated from. So, you know, I know this letter is addressed to Governor Kasich, and we have copied Representative Perals and Senator Hackett. I'd say send separate letters to each one of them, address to each of them. You know, that would be my recommendation.
Just a little history. This is traditional. If the state needs money, if you go back historically, they pluck local government, township, cities, villages. It's easier to do than special interests. They all have their people up there, and they'll fight you to death. But in the local government area, it gets hazy.
That's because they, the citizens, you know, the special interest...
It's a disconnect with the citizens.
Versus the citizens, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad to see the Municipal League is involved.
Right.
Yes.
Well, we saw this, and Bill and I both said, we can't pass this up. We both basically came to each other and said, did you see the municipal? And, you know, we've only cried for how many years now that, you know, our reduction of local government fund and so forth. So when there's an opportunity to voice it, we felt strongly and recommend that we voice it.
Well, that's approved this resolution, then.
One other point I wanted to add about this reduction is that their battle cry always was, you need to share services, you need to be doing that. And you saw in our joint meeting, we have a page and a half of shared services that we do with other municipalities, with the township, with Green County, and we were doing that all from day one. They didn't really need to tell us to do that, but that was their battle cry, is that you guys could be leaner and more efficient. And we were saying, no, we're already there. So it's interesting how this all developed.
Well, the Municipal League is aiming at the current governor and the current state reps because of the short time period here, but the Ohio Mayor's Alliance, you may have seen, has, has written very similar opinions to the two candidates for governor. And that's the number, one of the high areas of concern is, but, you know, I for one prefer the impact fee type of distribution because... the impact fee type of distribution, because each community can decide what they want to do with it versus just an infrastructure. And I don't know why they're trying to limit, and the Municipal League has, has fallen into that trap as well, as far as I'm concerned, with the Mayor's Alliance. And that is suggesting, well, in that case, just give, make it infrastructure-related. Well, we can all use infrastructure, but there's nothing wrong with the municipality or township deciding how they want to spend that money. I mean, the original concept, when that tax, one of the original taxes was put on was to share, be a revenue-sharing source, and not with strings. So anyway, just keep in mind that this battle's being fought on a lot of local levels. The bigger cities, I mean, we think we lost seven million dollars. You take Columbus or Cincinnati or some of these, it's huge. Or even our neighbor Dayton. But anyway, do I have a motion on Resolution eighteen dash thirty-six?
Motion to approve Resolution eighteen dash thirty-six.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution eighteen dash thirty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thanks. Next, Resolution eighteen dash thirty-seven.
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding reflecting changes to Article One Bargaining Unit Recognition, Article nineteen Workday, Workweek, Overtime, and the listing of job classifications by pay grade of the collective bargaining agreement with the Communication Workers of America, AFL-CIO number four three two two.
All right, thank you. Mr. Casera, have you got a, are you tracking your paces back and forth?
Yes, I am. I'm getting a lot of steps in today, so.
Yes, he is.
Showtime.
So again, the city and the Communication Workers Association, Local Law forty-three twenty-two, had just entered into our three-year agreement for the year two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and twenty. And at that point, right after the agreement was signed, shortly thereafter, we decided to rename the Planning and Zoning Department to Planning and Development. And also, we had a retirement in that particular department. And with that, as we always do throughout the city, when we have an opening, we go back in, reevaluate all the positions there that are doing the jobs, and try to determine whether or not we could do it more efficiently, or consolidate, reclassify. And that's what you have here, is basically we've elected to consolidate these two positions into one, and then we gave that a person, a new title, that position a new title, the planning coordinator. What happens with that is, is that the actual contract in the agreement itself lists each member that's in the union, and it gives their title and their pay grade. So when we redid the pay grade and the title, we had to go back to the union and discuss it with them. And the way to update the agreement midterm within the three years is to do a memorandum of understanding. And what you have here is basically changing the title. It did change a couple of the articles within the contract. So again, we felt that going through this MOU process was important now, because it does change the terms and benefits of that particular position there. So we presented that to the union, they agreed with the change, and they agreed with the changes in the particular articles and the schedule in the back, and they've already signed off on it. This legislation just gives the authority to the city manager to sign the MOU on behalf of city council.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution eighteen dash thirty-seven. All in favor say aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Next item is liquor permits. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Man and Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I apologize, the chief couldn't be here tonight, but he sent me in his stead. Hopefully, I perform to his satisfaction, give Mr. Casera a little bit of a break as well. What I have tonight is a liquor permit request. The Ohio Division of Liquor Control has sent police notification reference, a new D-one, D-two, D-three, and D-six liquor permit for VPC Beaver Creek Pizza LLC, doing business as Giordano's. I believe I pronounced that correctly. That will be located at twenty-eight nineteen Center Drive, Beaver Creek, Ohio, four-five-four three-two. The records, checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, sorry, Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the business officers, shareholders for this application request. And at this point, staff is recommending this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to accept without comment. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you very much. Next, decision items, second quarter two thousand and eighteen financial summary. Is, you're going to let Mr. Casera stay back?
I'll let him rest for a second. That was distributed, I believe, it's been about two weeks ago.
Oh, he couldn't stand it. He's coming up.
If councils had any, this is through the second quarter, you could have rested.
I know, it just feels like my night, I feel like I should be up here more. I don't know what it is.
Make him earn that award.
Right.
The second quarter, though, again, there's a couple of things in there that are interesting. Again, the property taxes came in, they finally came in, and they're five percent higher than we had already budgeted, which is a good thing for us. Interest rates, all the idle funds we get from the property tax, we immediately throw into Star Ohio right now, which is over two percent, which we haven't seen in, I don't know how many years. It's been a long time since we've gotten two percent on anything, so interest looks good. The golf course, if it stops raining a little bit, we had like thirty-three inches of rain during the first half of the year. Normally, we have about eighteen, so again, they had a little bit of a wet streak going there, and the last couple of months have been good, so we're hoping that gets turned around. And besides that, everybody else is looking good. Again, we talked about at the engagement that the salt prices are going up from the forty-eight dollars to the eighty-eight dollars. So again, we're already programming that into our nineteen budget, but hopefully, we have a full barn right now of about six thousand tons, and hopefully, that'll get us through the end of the year. So we're hoping that weather cooperates. Not only, you know, not only do we want no rain, and we want sunny days for the rest of the fall for the golf course, but we want that, again, to continue through the winter to eliminate our salt purchases, so. But besides that, everybody's doing a great job, keeping the expenditures below the fifty percent mark at this point, and folks are doing a, they're very diligent about keeping that going, and they know that you're watching it, and the city manager's watching it, so they're keeping an eye on all that stuff. So rosy pitcher for right now.
Okay, thank you. Be better if you had that seven point two million dollars, wouldn't it? All right, do I have a motion to accept the second quarter financial summary?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the, accept the second quarter two thousand and eighteen financial summary. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. All right, mayor's report. It's been a while since we've had a televised meeting, and I'm going to, I'm sure there's a lot going on, I'm going to hit a couple of them. First, I'd like to thank the Beaver Creek School System for the beautification in the parking lot at Haynes and Dayton Xenia. That house they tore down, they have beautified that whole area now with a nice landscape and, and a parking lot looks, looks fantastic. Some of the things that have been going on for me, Meladaze, which was, is, my understanding is the Indian New Year. Some of us were there, it was, it was a real pleasure, and it's always a treat to get to sample the food and, and anything we can do to help the community celebrate that New Year, we love doing it. I also had the privilege to be a contestant at Decoy Art for the pottery challenge. And it won't be the first time, and it is the first time, and it won't be the last time I got beat.
It's okay, God.
It, no, it was a lot of fun, and it's an effort to, to raise a little money for some local charities, as well as to, to recognize decoy art a little bit as well. Last Friday was the final party on the patio. The band, I enjoyed the band that was there, they were a three-piece. It was a little quieter than some of the others, you could actually communicate, so it was, I enjoyed it. I couldn't stay for the whole event, but it was, it was fun. I would like to congratulate our own Diane Mississin for being appointed to the Ohio Municipal Clerks Association Board. So congratulations to you. And then I am off tomorrow morning, bright and early, like six o'clock in the morning, to the, to a leadership tour. I get to have the privilege to be able to fly on a C-17 down to MacDill Air Base in Florida. And so Vice Mayor's already, I think I already notified everybody, I think, but I know you're aware that I was going to be out of town. So anyway, with that, let's move on to council time. Would we like, you like to start on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, one, you mentioned Decoy Art Studio, so I wanted to remind everyone that Art Fest is coming up in just a few weeks. I know popcorn's on everyone's mind, but Art Fest is coming up, it's September sixteenth, Sunday, September sixteenth, to be exact, from eleven to six. It's going to be at Beaver Creek Community Park, and it's a wonderful event, so I think this year, the attendance will even be more than last year, and so that is just a wonderful event, and I think it's going to grow each year.
It is.
They, fantastic work they do.
I enjoyed it.
I did too, and it's just amazing, so looking forward to that. The other thing is, a couple of weeks ago, we all, or several of us I know, attended the truck event at City Barbecue. And one of the nonprofits that were there was called Creek Safe. And I don't know, I know some of us are aware of it, but some aren't. And one of the things that they're doing is, it's a local nonprofit, and they're raising money to provide additional safety measures for our schools, from elementary all the way up. So I wanted to see if it'd be possible, I'd love to have a presentation, they have raised almost sixty thousand dollars for these locks. And since, you know, our community does include the schools, and we'd be nice to know what's going on, or when they're going to be getting these locks, I would like to see if there's any way we can have them come and give us a little information about what they're doing, and when these locks will be installed. I think it'd be good for the parents, and certainly-
I know, I can ask them.
Love to, love to see that if we could, so.
Sure.
And that was a great event at City Barbecue, so.
It was.
Lot of fun, and so, that's it.
All right. Councilmember Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Begin by thanking the Dayton Development Coalition. They hosted a congressional reception here in Beaver Creek several weeks ago with Senator Brown and Congressman Turner. The event was, as it should be, non-political, and is to show the appreciation that both of our members, both Senator Brown and Congressman Turner, have towards Wright-Parrish and Air Force Base with the recent passage and signing of the National Defense Authorization Act, and how important we are, not just to the state, but also to the country and the world in terms of our national defense. Like to thank the Beaver Creek Schools for inviting council to our, their opening day celebration a few weeks ago. I was able to attend and see all they have in store for this coming year, as well as the previous year. I do want to give recognition to the awarded two members of their staff at the event, the first being Kami Bradley. She was awarded the Classified Support Staff Member of the Year, as well as Sarah Miller, who was awarded Teacher of the Year. And as we all know, with school being back in session, to be careful on the road, as we have more traffic and more of those in the morning, as well as the afternoon. And with the schools, with the mayor, got to attend the eighteenth backyard battle this past Friday, which is the opening game of the football team against Xenia. And although it was not, as we would have liked it to be, it was a great, always a great kickoff, you know, Friday night lights, as they say, and start the great football season as we have. Mayor Stone, unfortunately for Beaver Creek, had to present Xenia Mayor Sarah Mays with the trophy and bring it back to Xenia, but-
She even made me bow to her today.
But, you know, if you haven't gone to a game, please go. It's going to be, you know, interesting season moving ahead, not just for football, but also for the band that's displayed. It's a great community event. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
I would like to give a shout-out to Beaver Creek Community Theater. This, last month, they had the fifteenth annual Day Tony Awards, which is kind of fun for theater. And Beaver Creek Community Theater got a Medallion of Excellence, which, congratulations to them, those aren't, aren't easy to get. They got top honors for two of their plays, The Street Car Named Desire and Young Frankenstein, both because of outstanding overall production, so yay for Beaver Creek. And the treasurer of the organization, John Falkenbach, was inducted to the Hall of Fame because he's donated twenty, forty, forty years of significant contribution. So just pretty cool that we have a quality theater production in Beaver Creek, and it goes well, and yay. I wanted to thank the staff. We had a retreat a couple of weekends ago for the council advance, and what that was, was a presentation by each department of what they felt should be in the budget for next year. Very informational, it was useful information, and I thank the staff for participating and being so organized for that, so that was good. We had a joint meeting with the township for our work session. I think it was one of the best work sessions we've had with the township. There was a lot of, of sharing of information, and we do partner on a lot of things, and I really, I really thought for a joint meeting, it was actually one of our best. At the retreat, or at the advance, we also talked about Beaver Creek becoming a city of peace, and so I've got these booklets that I'll pass out to everybody, it's just background information. We're going to work toward that, and I think that that will be a nice, important thing for, there's more here, too.
No, we're good.
It'll be a flag in our hat that Beaver Creek stands above some other places, and we do value our, we do have good values, and we do try to make Beaver Creek a place that is, promotes peace throughout the world and within our community. I wanted to, can I ask a question of staff? There's been a lot of newspaper articles about the closing of Sears and Elder Beerman. Could you give, do you know what's going to happen at Beaver Creek? Or is that too, we can wait until another time?
We can't, we can't disclose that information at this time.
Okay. But I've had several people ask me, okay, what's happening with Beaver Creek, so.
The management is on top.
So that's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman up.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Just really one comment from me, and that's, I wanted to thank some members of our Indian American community. Last Friday, Councilman Kern and Mayor Stone and I had the privilege of attending a little appreciation event for our police and fire departments. And I don't know if that's going to be spoke about tonight or not, but I don't want to steal too much thunder, but it was in honor of the Indian holiday Raksha Bhante, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, in which the ladies in India thank and honor their brothers for protecting them back home. And in our community, they wanted to thank the police and fire departments for protection. So it was a real nice little event, and I hope it's something that we continue to do year after year. And State Representative Antani gave a little proclamation, so it was nice that he was able to do that, and it was just a good, good all-around event that we hosted at the police station.
Thank you. Councilmember Kern.
Councilmember Ryan and myself attended Dayton Chamber of Commerce to meet the candidates out at PSA at the Dayton International Airport. So we had both the candidates for governor, both do wine and cordray, were there. There was about a hundred and twenty people in, in the audience, and had an opportunity to hear their messages and to ask questions. Very informative.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're right, I can't believe it's been so long since we had a televised meeting, I had to look back at my calendar. I had the opportunity and the privilege to attend the Green County Fairgrounds for the Hoag, Hog, with H-O-G, showing competition. I should have known I was in for a rough ride when I thought it was a hawk showing, and I was told to bring old shoes. So hopefully, if I'm invited back, if they'll allow it, I will be better prepared. I was excited to see that Officer Brown was also equally unprepared, because he showed up in uniform. So I came right from work, dressed like I normally do at work, with a rain boot- I normally do at work, with rain boots, not the best attire to be herding hogs in a pencil skirt. But I came in third place. So, you know, I guess it worked out. I had a lot of input from the crowd. So, I'd like to thank everybody at the fairgrounds who gave me tips while I was trying to chase after this hog that was running away from me. I had a few run into me. I almost fell over a few times, but Officer Brown and I had a great time. We were joined by Representative Peralis, Dick Gould, and Judge Adolfo Tornicio. So, it was a really good showing from some of the local elected officials in Green County. And I think everybody enjoyed laughing at me while I was in the ring in my rain boots and pencil skirt. So, it was a very good time. I look forward to hopefully doing it next year, if they allow me back. One other minor thing, too, I wanted to mention, and I apologize, I didn't catch it earlier, but the agenda has Section Five, subsection D, the wrong date. I didn't catch it earlier, because the minutes are actually accurate. The minutes are correct, with the date for the regular meeting is July twenty-third. But I did wanna mention, for anyone watching at home, or anyone who looks this up later, the minutes will not match the agenda, but it is, all the minutes are correct, and the date on that minute is actually correct as well. So.
Okay, thank you. And if, since you're, you know, if I get invited to that contest next year, and you're still willing.
[laughing]
All right. I think the boots are what did it, but that's beside the.
I think so. I really do.
All right. Let's move on, then, please. City managers' report.
The question is, did the boots get washed or thrown away?
Oh, I'm not getting rid of it.
Oh, okay.
Same for next year.
Yeah.
Something that never goes away is the smell.
It has not yet.
Bring everybody up to date here. Of course, this weekend, I think everybody's familiar. Saturday, September eighth, Sunday, September ninth, the popcorn festival. Is that the right dates? That's not the right date, is it? I think she got a week later. That's the dates for the, 'cause that's not this weekend.
No, it's right.
It's the ninth?
This weekend's the first.
Okay. So, the festival, the popcorn festival, yes, the September eighth and ninth. The festival has over two hundred booths, five-k run, eight-thirty a.m. that Saturday, September eighth. And the car shows on that Sunday, September ninth, registration at nine a.m. So, a whole bunch of things will be happening the week after the holiday. And I guess that's what I was thinking. A lot of people don't know, a lot of work goes into this by the popcorn committee. This isn't a city event. This is a separate committee that organizes it. So, I've included some contact information. Some people might try to call here. We'll give you the phone number to call or to email, but six oh two corn, or two six seven six. So, the info is at info@beavercreekpopcornfestival.org, if there's any other communication to be had for that. But come out to the popcorn festival. It is a blast. I wanna mention that joint, joined Beaver Creek Fraternal Order of Police and Beaver Creek Professional Firefighters for a moment of silence to reflect on the tragic events that occurred on September eleventh, two thousand and one. This brief moment of silence and reflection will begin at eight forty-six a.m. on September eleventh. This will take place at Beaver Creek Station, nine-eleven Memorial, on North Fairfield Road there. So, come out. It was very, the first time they did it, conducted it, was last year, and it was a very touching little service that they had. Wanted to make everybody aware of, if you haven't already seen it, on our Facebook page, on our home webpage, everywhere we can post it, just about Twitter. I've been posting about the survey. It's still out there till the end of September. But this is a little different. This is gonna be a master, the master plan public forum. So, this is where, not just a survey, we still want you to do the survey. But this is, the public is invited to attend the forum on Wednesday, September nineteenth, from six to eight at Laffino Plaza. So, what this is, is basically, the forum will be interactive with attendees. You're gonna be giving money, play money. Okay, let me specify that, play money. We'll have to take the award away from Bill if we give real money away. But it'll be fake money, but not like Monopoly money. And they'll take that and distribute to their priorities of how they think the funding should be spent. So, it's a little different way, but it's a, maybe kids will help out with this. But citizens' input is very important, and we'll provide a framework for the priorities for the parks and recreation system. So, if you have any other information, please contact Beaver Creek Parks at the four-two-seven-five-five-fourteen, or the email. Please come. We are asking for your input. And one of the fun events that I've done in the past, and hopefully be able to fit into my schedule, is Rotary Park Playground Community Build. Most of these have been a pocket park, you know, neighborhood parks where we've done this. Well, Rotary is more of a community park. So, we're calling it Community Park Build. They've been out there with, if you haven't been out to Rotary in a while, maintenance, park staff has been putting in the sidewalks to this and prepping a lot of the work ahead of time. But this is actually work for the playground. So, come out. The public's invited. We'll be assembling a new playground at Rotary Park. The community build is, like I said, September twenty-second, and it'll start at nine a.m. No, you don't have to have experience, and no, you don't have to have tools. We'll help you with that. But, you know, it, come stay for an hour, come stay three hours. But it's a lot of fun getting to know your fellow citizen and talking about whatever. And it's always fun to do the same thing over when you put together wrong, have to take it apart and do it again. That's always a blast. But come out and see us, and again, talk to us, talk to staff, and input's always welcome at that time as well. And I just, one other thing I have tomorrow is, I'll be attending, the Dayton Development Coalition is having a tour of Wright Patterson tomorrow. So, I'm going to attend tomorrow, kind of almost an all-day event. I've had limited exposure to the base in some ways. I know some of you have been out there many times. I've been out there one time before. And each trip does something totally different, 'cause there's so much to see out there. And the list of events that they're going to is really neat. So, I'm learning, hope to, and I get to talk to people from the DDCs as well at the same time. So, a kind of a dual purpose, but I'm excited to go tomorrow. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. That'll be a good trip. Now, it's time for citizen comment. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council on any issue at all? If there is, please come forward. Give us a name and address. We ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes. If you need more than that, please have one of your friends or neighbors donate some time to you. There are three minutes. Hi.
Hi. Is it okay if we do this together? I'm Anjali Brandon, and.
Yes, you certainly may.
Okay. So, I was just wanting to support Beaver Creek as a city of peace.
I need your address, please.
Oh, two-four-eight-one Crystal Lee Drive. Just wanted to show our support for Beaver Creek as a city of peace for three reasons. One is to help our children, because when we can teach our children to have peace within themselves, and peace with their, with their classmates, then we raise better citizens and create a better world. And the way that we can do that with our kids is Heartfulness Institute, that I'm, Uma and I are both trainers with. We can teach the teachers the relaxation technique that they can bring into their classrooms. It's a five-minute guided relaxation from the feet on up, and children of all ages can do that. So, we wanna be able to give our children those tools to relax and have tools to balance themselves, so that they don't have test anxiety, or performance anxiety, and can, and can create a calm environment in their classroom when things get rowdy. The second reason is for the community, to create a safe community where we have peaceful and harmonious citizens, where we have an environment that's welcoming to all, regardless of our differences, that we stand for peace. And the Heartfulness Institute teaches free meditation, to give our community tools, to create well-being in ourselves, as well as radiate that out to our communities. The third reason is so that we can serve as an example. I'm a proud Beaver Creek resident, born and raised here, and I would love Beaver Creek to be a beacon light amongst, standing amongst all these other international cities around the world, that we stand for peace. You know, we may not be perfect, but we at least keep that as a priority, and let that be a priority in our community, whether it's in schools, maybe in the library. We can have demonstrations, but just that as a city, we stand for peace. So, I just wanted to be here to support you guys in adopting that, and do whatever we can to help you guys do that, and stand together with you, with the Heartfulness Institute and the Beaver Creek City Council, to have Beaver Creek be a city of peace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity. As a member of the Heartfulness Institute, since two thousand, we have already been.
Can you give the clerk your name and address also?
My name is Uma Mullapudi, two-forty-four Shelford Way, Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
Yeah, we heard about the proposal that Beaver Creek is being nominated, or being proposed to nominate as a city of peace. And we wanted to share that we, for the past twenty years, we have already been serving in this community, offering relaxation and meditation sessions to each member, offering it free of charge. And we've been offering it to Beaver Creek teachers, who are empowered to teach the students. And stress has become a culture in our society. And if we can bring the attention back, to peace is the norm, and stress is not the norm. And I think by nominating Beaver Creek as a city of peace, we bring it to our citizens' awareness, how important peace is, and making children aware, and giving them exercises, like what peace means to them, so they can become aware of that. That is the most important thing. And once we have peace, we can live better lives. And we are so happy and be a part of Beaver Creek, and we are so impressed that it's being proposed. And that's why we are here today, to support Beaver Creek. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address council? Anyone at all? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.